On behalf of the constituents of Southeastern Conference, it is my pleasure this morning to welcome you esteemed delegates and our honored guests to the 12th regular constituency session of the Southeastern Conference of Seventh-day Adventists. Although the COVID-19 pandemic has delayed this session, we made it here by God's grace, and for that we say to God be the glory. The theme for our constituency session is building God's kingdom one constituent at a time. This theme is a clarion call to all of God's people within our conference to do their parts in winning souls into the kingdom of God. These are clearly uncertain times in which we live. The hearts of many people have been gripped with anxiety, apprehension, a sense of helplessness and hopelessness in these challenging times. The Church of God, I believe, more than ever before is positioned to lead people to Jesus Christ, the hope of the world. This is the time for us as a church to rise up, to use our gifts, our efforts, and every spirit ordained means to reach others for Jesus. So we've gathered here today, those of us who are delegates, on behalf of the constituents of this great conference, to elect leaders and to make changes to our bylaws and constitution. Our decisions, I believe, should focus on positioning our conference, Southeastern Conference, to adapt to meet the demands of an ever-changing world. Let us be mindful of this sacred trust and allow the Holy Spirit of God to guide us in our deliberations and in our decision-making. In Acts chapter 11, verse 1 and 11, chapter 1, verse 11, "As Jesus descended to heaven, the angels affirmed to his disciples that this same Jesus will return." My brothers and my sisters, we are closer now to that day than ever before. So while we continue to do our part in taking care of the business of our conference, let us ensure that we are prepared to receive Jesus when he returns. May the presence of God be with us and his sovereign will be accomplished today. This is a business meeting, yet it is a religious business meeting. So we cannot start a business meeting of a religious nature without a word from the Lord. And so in the next few minutes, we'll be having our devotional. And I have the distinct honor of introducing the devotional speaker today in the person of Frederick Russell. He's a former president of the Allegheny West Conference and the immediate lead pastor of the Berean Church in Atlanta, Georgia. Pastor Russell has two passions, pastoring and developing leaders. He ministers around the world and to church-based leaders and leaders in corporate, academic, government, and healthcare organizations. Over the 20 years, over the last 20 years, concurrent with pastoring, he has facilitated leadership training in church, corporate, academic, healthcare, governmental settings in areas of leadership development, high-performance teams, healthy conflict, strategy facilitation, and organizational transitions. He also serves on the faculty of the College of Executive Coaching. Pastor Russell has a special passion for helping leaders and change agents move the organization and lives to the next level. In order to advance this passion, he has developed a company called the True North Leadership Group. As an adjunct to his passion for developing leaders, Pastor Russell is a former columnist for The Adventist Review. He is also the creator and visionary for the Innovative Impact Leadership Conference that focuses on exposing pastors to contemporary models of ministry. He is also the immediate past leader of the Pastoral Evangelism and Leadership Conference PELC held annually at Oxford University. He is currently a columnist for The Atlanta Business Journal and is writing a book on leadership. Pastor Russell is happily married to his wife Brenda and a proud father of two young adults and is blessed to have two amazing grandchildren. And he is the one that God has chosen to bring our devotional today. But before we hear him, we'd have a special item of music from Sister Yasuko Savoy from the Sinai Plantation Church. After that, the next voice that we hear will be that of Pastor Freddie Russell.
And we lift you up and magnify your name. It's not enough words that I can say to tell you how much I appreciate all the wonderful things you've given me, your loving kindness, your tenderness. I want to thank you. And you're worthy of all the glory, Lord. You're worthy of all my praise. See, I don't know why you would love me. Why would you show me so much mercy? Why would you suffer in death for me way back, way back on Calvary? Lord, I want to thank you, And you're worthy of all the praise. Wonderful, glorious, holy and righteous, victorious, conqueror, triumphant, mighty, healer, deliverer, shield and defense. My strong tower in my best friend, your own omnipotent, omnipresent, soon come a king, Alpha Omega, Lord of everything. Is your name holy and righteous. My strong tower in my omnipotent, soon come again. Lord, your life. My strong tower in my best friend, omnipotent, omnipresent, soon come a king, Alpha Omega, Lord of everything. Is your name. My heart cries only, the angels cry only. Solely is your name. Lord Jesus, your life. Lord Jesus, your life is your name.
I want to talk to leaders this morning. I want to have an intimate, very direct conversation with leaders this morning. There is no greater gathering of leaders in a conference than in sessions like this. Most of the delegates are leaders in the local church and leaders beyond the church, pastoral leaders, corporate church leaders. This is a conversation with leaders. And whatever you do, don't lose me this morning. God has always, Kelvin, had special connections with leaders, always. He encourages the discourage in leaders. There's Elijah who had his highs and his lows. And sometimes Elijah was so high that you felt God just tapping him and working out around him. But he would have the dashes to his lows of where he would battle discouragement and even sometimes bordering on depression. But God has a way of talking to leaders on every level and every situation. He gives discernment to leaders. He did it with Joshua. What Joshua said, "I know where my choices will lie." And so he said, "Choose you this day whom you will serve, but this is what I'm going to do." He also has this way of holding all of us in the leadership community accountable. He confronted David and his failure. And you remember those words of Nathan, those singing words of Nathan? You are the man. He calls us out of challenging and sometimes just bad choices, like Moses, where he says, "Moses, the second time around, don't strike the rock, just speak to the rock." But sometimes God talks to leaders over their deepest needs. And you see this showing up in John chapter 3, where God, through a course of Jesus Christ, arrives in a garden one evening, late one night. And this leader shows up by the name of Nicodemus. Let me say again, whatever you do, don't lose me this morning. Nicodemus is not your average ordinary leader because Nicodemus has been serving in a particular organization of the Jewish economy. And again, when Jesus shows up, he cuts to the chase and he says, "The Nicodemus, Nick, you must be born again." The problem with Nicodemus was this, is that he thought he was all right. He paid attention a lot to the externals, that I look good, I walk good, I'm serving well in my local church, wherever I'm serving. He belonged to a group of leaders who had gotten careless and callous. Over the years, the New International Version calls this group the Jewish Ruling Council. That means that he was a church-based leader. Prior to his encounter with Jesus, before this, Nicodemus didn't speak up sometimes in those Jewish councils. He went along with everybody else. And I've been leading leaders and pastoring and dealing with leaders for over 38 years now. And I've seen a lot on every level. And sometimes it's easy, intention-filled times in the church, in the local church, and there to go along with everyone else. And even though he led when the church setting, it was not always a godly environment. His own encounter with Jesus, Nick approaches Jesus and with flattering language, the usual stuff, where we attempt to appeal to a person's ego. He says, "You're a great teacher, you're awesome, you're all that." And Jesus simply cuts to the chase and he talks to a leader. And he says to the leader, he says to us, "You must be born again." Freddie, why would you come here and talk about this? Well, that's the same challenge with Nicodemus. Because what was happening with Nicodemus is that you would assume that he had been born again. You would assume that Nicodemus had it all together. You would assume that he was walking upright with God. But who are we kidding? We know that with all us, at times were challenger, but sometimes the situation and Jesus never made the assumption. But sometimes the bottom line is this one right here, and I have no idea who I'm talking to. But he says, "You must, Nick, be born again." Now, why am I going in this direction? I'm not talking, most times you preach these sessions, they think you're talking to pastors. But no, I'm talking to everyone who owes leadership. Watch this this morning, watch this. So, and that's the setup of this morning's message. When we begin to pause and reflect, the question is probing this morning. Help me, Lord. And the message is probing this morning on this level. And my question to you is, have you truly been born again? Well, here it is. Born again, in brief, is when everything changes when we accept Jesus Christ as Savior. Come on, Freddie, that's religion one-on-one. No, it's not. It's when we accept Jesus as Savior, when being a Christ follower becomes real and more important, we live and walk out Christianity. Say it again. It's not a matter of just declaration, but it's in our everyday leadership that we walk out Christianity. Now, there are two great places in the Bible that demonstrates Christianity being walked out. There's a Sermon on the Mount. And there's one other place that God hit me with a few mornings ago in my own devotional life. I'd like you to take your smartphones this morning, if you would, turn them on, if you don't have turned them off, and go to your Bible app this morning, your Bible app. If I could have turned to 1 Corinthians chapter 13 and put it on the Message Version. And so the other morning, I'm having worship and I'm just sitting in the presence of God and just been in his presence and God began to speak to me powerfully from this word. Now, guys, I read 1 Corinthians 13 a billion and one times. But prudence, that morning, that morning, God said something and he was so graphic in this thing. I said, "God, what are you saying?" Listen to this. I'm talking about Christianity now, watch this. "If I speak with human eloquence and angelic estacy, but I don't love, I'm nothing but a creaky and rusty gate." "If I speak God's word," look at me, everybody, "with power, revealing all his mysteries and making everything plain as day. And if I have faith that says to a mountain, 'Jump,' and it jumps, but don't love, I'm nothing." Look at me, everybody, I am nothing. Watch this. "If I give everything I own to the poor and even go to the stake to be burned as a martyr, which is very impressive, but I don't love, I've gotten nowhere. It's burned for nothing." So no matter what I say, what I believe, what I do, I'm bankrupt without love. Now, let me shift this down, watch this. The first line says, "Love never gives up." But look at me, everybody. There is an assumption that we're all Christians here. And so often, there is this duplicity that happens in the leadership community on every level of leadership. That what we proclaim, what we declare, it doesn't always get lived out. And the most difficult place to be a Christian is where? At home. Then the church, and then the other sectors and sections of our life. So instead of saying, "Love never gives up," I'm going to use Christian in front of all of these. And I want to talk about this. Christians, Christian leaders, never give up. And what it's talking about is people, and so often, guys, we write each other off very quickly. Sometimes the very place where you need to see mercy and grace and understanding, we just write each other off. And God says, "I don't care what someone does around you." As a Christian leader, we never give up on people. And there are folk all across this church where they're written off, there's no opportunity, they can't serve in the church because something may have happened 50 years ago and it's as though it happened last night. Christian leaders never give up. Watch the second one here, I love this. It says here, "Christian leaders care more for others than themselves." Look at me, everybody, we have this narcissism where it's all about me. When you're around leaders, as we're in this room this morning, most of us are obsessed, even this morning, of thinking only about us. In fact, studies have been shown that 50% of our thoughts is only about ourselves. So if it's all about you, that everything that happens in leadership, you can begin to define it in terms of how it affects me. And some of the drama and junk that has happened in the Church of God because you got a bunch of folk where it's all about them. I love the third one. "Love," in the message says, "Christian leaders don't want what it doesn't have." Christian leaders do not want what it doesn't have. It's Paul who comes along. And guys, remember, this is a conversation this morning. It's a conversation about Christianity, of walking it out. It's not about trying to woo you from the pulpit this morning. This is an intimate conversation that is so real. When I arrived at that place where Paul is, Paul says, "I have learned to be content." But we have a room full of leaders that are discontent over this, discontent over that. Then you get a stress and an unease in the leadership culture that puts everything sometimes, sometimes from the local church all the way through, on edge. Christian leaders, they care more for others than selves. Christian leaders don't want what it doesn't have. And here's the next one. "Christian leaders do not strut." In other words, when you walk into these kind of communities... community gatherings or leadership gatherings, there is a sense of self-importance, that I'm a part of this, I'm in this delegation, I'm that. And the Lord says, "Those who strut, those who think they're all of that, those who have a sense of self-importance." God says, "I have a way at times of deflating that." And if you're in this room this morning and there is that sense that you're not kidding yourself, that sometimes there's this need to be important up front, out front, local church all the way through. And God says, "I'm not impressed with any of that." You're impressed with the mythologies that you tell yourself, but I'm not impressed. I'm not impressed with your agenda. I'm not impressed with your desire for this. God says, "The only thing I want is my glory." Your position, your title, local church all the way through means nothing. Watch this. Goes on to say this. I love this one here. It says, it goes with the one before. "Christian leaders don't have swell heads." I love the next one. "Christian leaders, they don't force themselves on others." Did you gotta walk like I walk? You gotta think like I think? You gotta smell like I smell? You gotta speak like I speak? You gotta agree with what I agree with? And some of you in this audience this morning have succumbed to that sometimes, where you've been intimidated and dominated by stronger people around you. And you go along in order to keep peace. But listen to everybody. Peace at any cost will bring you chaos. Because it's all determined upon who is doing what and who is in control. And guys, listen to me. None of that impresses God. None of that. Keep talking, Freddie, I will. "Christian leaders don't fly off the handle." I've been around leaders too many times that they just lose it. Let me tell you something, everybody. No one can make you mad. No one can make you upset. You gotta choose to be mad. You gotta choose to be upset. And this craziest where you start cussing and fussing in your home. And sometimes in the church. And sometimes in meetings where you lose it. The Lord says, "Christian leaders don't fly off the handle." That's the control of themselves. They understand that in the meeting, that when you fly off the handle and you lose it, even if you win, you're gonna regret it in the morning. I'm talking about what I have in spirit, sometimes what I've done over the years. But I've seen it over the years that the stuff that goes on in the Christian leadership community on every level, sometimes, we gotta call it what it is. That ain't Christianity. And we give ourselves, we give each other passes all the time without calling it. That's not right. You can't do that. But if you have not been born again, then it's okay. Because there's nothing that hits your heart when your kids at home and they watch what goes on in your home and the junk you give off. And then you come on Sabbath morning. Happy Sabbath. And your kids are saying, "Who is that masked man?" That's not the guy that went off on mommy this week. Beyond leaders sitting in the church of the board, that's not the leader I said that went off on the pastor this week. I'm sitting at home and I'm overhearing dad and mom, dad and mom talking about folk in the church and just running them down. And your kids are saying, "Is that Christianity?" Who are we kidding? It goes on all the time of that our duplicity, our contradiction, our contradictions, our inconsistencies. And it's not about you coming off with behavioral modification. "I keep it together during this meeting." No, it'll come out in other places. It boils down to this. Have you been born again? Watch this. Watch this. "Christian leaders," the next one. "They don't keep scores of the sins of others." We have the ability to come off and just say that they did this, they did that. And I know him, and I know her, and we can't... Guys, the same mercy and grace that you want, we have to, as Christian leaders, extend that to others. At some point, it breaks down. And how often in our churches and every levels of the church, do we keep scores about other people's failures? We almost revel in it. We almost enjoy it. It's great food to begin to chew on with other people. And it sounds good and makes us feel good about ourselves. And it's only the public that is saying, it's only the Pharisee who is saying, "I'm so glad I'm not like him." And God says, "You're worse than him." "Christian leaders take pleasure in truth." We are right now in a culture, right now in this country, we're right now in a culture where lying has become normal. We got whole political systems right now that are based on lying. And the people who are leading the lying are so-called Christians. But forget all of that. How many times do we have those right in the leadership community of our church on every level who just lie? And the Lord says, "That is not Christianity." It's not. Let me talk to those right now who struggle with lying. This is what you give to the Lord Jesus Christ. "God, I gotta be honest, at least with myself, that I have a compunction to lie about things in order to get past the moment, in order to get past my, in order to take control of what is going on." Or sometimes I just lie. Just to lie. Okay. I was trying to be more profound than that. But George, you know she... Hey, guys. There is never a justification to lie. But let's be truthful here. All of us have lied in our leadership. All of us. And if you were to stand right now and to say, "I've never lied," that is your second one right there. It really is. But guys, I've been in meetings on every level of the church where folk just lie. That ain't Christianity. You can't fake Christianity till you make it. You can't fake it. It's either it's there or it's not. Are we gonna blow it at times? You better believe it. We're gonna make mistakes at times? You better believe it. But when it comes normal and standard operating procedure to act ungodly? How do we explain this to God? How do we explain this? Let me end here. We finish in five minutes. Here we go. "Love never dies." "Love never stops." What would happen in this room right now? What do you think would happen in this room right now if love through genuine Christians broke out? Can you imagine God's kingdom getting built like nothing else? And rapidly, like it's never happened before? Listen to this, everybody. There is an inscription on a granite plaque, Calvin, at the West Point Military Academy. And Prudence, this thing blew me away. It's called the Code of Conduct for the military cadets at West Point. And George Bradley, this is what it says. The cadet code at West Point goes like this. "A cadet will never lie, cheat, steal, or tolerate those who do." That's their honor code. So what if Christians took 1 Corinthians 13 and that became our honor code? Because when we do that, I want you to listen to my language here. We end up becoming counter-cultural leaders. That is where we live and lead in the exact opposite of what you see in the culture. The culture right now, as opposed to the culture being peripheral to the church, the church has become peripheral to the culture. We're operating out on the edges. We no longer impacted. But when you have a group of leaders in Southeastern Conference who are determined to become counter-cultural leaders, it's a whole different way. Because when we blend in with everyone else, we're no different than the Republicans and the Democrats battling it out daily in pursuit of crass political power. We become like them. We can turn on Fox or MSNBC or CNN and watch them duke it out. And the same thing happens in the church. We are the counter-cultural leaders who said, "We will not be like the world." "We will lead in a different way. We will treat each other in a totally different way." Where are they? Because when the church becomes counter-cultural and says, "We're not blending in with them. We're different." That's in the Church of God. Michael Ousso, that's when the kingdom begins to get built. So here we go. One of my favorite heroes in leadership, and I'm with leaders almost every day in all kinds of settings. My favorite leader was General Colin Powell. One of my personal heroes. And at his funeral, his son, his son Michael, gave a powerful eulogy. In fact, his son's eulogy was the main eulogy. And I said that, I said, "I thought about my own kids." And I said, "What will my kids, who know everything about me, what will they say at my funeral?" Let me turn it on you. What are your kids gonna say at your funeral? If they told the truth? At his dad's funeral service, Michael Powell talked about resume virtues and eulogy virtues. Resume virtues and eulogy virtues. I'm gonna read it exactly as I took it down as he was talking that day. Michael Powell says, "Resume virtues are your achievements and your skills and your positions. Those are resume virtues." He was quoting directly from David Brooks, who had written a column in the New York Times called Road to Character. And in that column, David Brooks talks about resume virtues and eulogy virtues. Now, resume virtues are okay, but they can only go so far. Titles, achievements, accomplishments, skills. But here it is. Play softly for me. Here are what eulogy virtues are. Eulogy virtues are those discussed at your funeral. The ones that exist at the core of your being. Whether you are kind, brave, honest, or faithful. This person has a quiet but solid sense of right and wrong. Not only to do good, but to be good. He or she wants to love intimately, to sacrifice self in service to others and to live in obedience to some transcendent trust. And I said, "God, help me to stop focusing on resume virtues. But God, let my life as a leader be lived in such a way that I embrace eulogy virtues." So Micah says this to leaders. "He shall show thee, O man and woman, what is good as a leader." And this is what God requires of leaders. To do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with their God. I'll tell the world I'm a Christian. Because when it's all over, it's not how I looked. It's not how impressive I was. It's that I live and walk out Christianity. And Jesus said to Nicodemus, "Nic, none of that can happen until you've been born again." I'm praying for all of us. God bless you.
I'd like to invite you now to reverently bow your heads as we pray. We are thankful this morning, Father, for reminding all of us that we must be born again. Thankful, Father, for just loving us and watching over us and taking care of us. And we come this morning, we come to Thee just as we are, needy and dependent. But we know that Thou art a caring Savior. You died that we may have eternal life, if only we will cooperate with Thee. Help us this day that we may lay hold upon Thee by living faith. Separate us, Father, from everything that would separate us from Thee. We come to You this morning and this very hour, asking for Your blessing and help as we gather in this room. We pray for Your direction in the matters at hand. And we are asking, Father, for a clear understanding on how we ought to conduct the business, to conduct the work that You have called us to do. Strengthen our confidence in You. Bless this meeting today, and bless those who are present, as well as those lives we will encounter when this meeting is all over. These things we ask, in Your Son's loving name. Amen.